Yeah.
My wife and I were both hobbling, right? Good back is missed up too, and she hit that bad. She was doing the stairs and I was painting the rest of us. She was working her way down ahead of me and we're both hobbling around like, oh my god.
Good morning, everyone. With the special commissioners' court meeting, today's date is December 16th, 2024. And for the record, we have a quorum. We, Commissioner Aiken is excused, Commissioner Martin is excused, President be the judge, Commissioner Perdola, and Commissioner King. Where we get started, we're gonna have a short prayer by Commissioner King, and then we'll have our pledges.
Dear Lord, please watch over all of us as we make decisions within the county. Make sure we're making the right decisions as we move on. Also, Lord, if you would, watch over all of us, bless all of us, and whatever we have going on, we make the right decision as we move forward in life. Thank you for everything you've done for us, Lord.
Amen. I don't know how long this agenda's gonna take, but we'll see what happens, okay? We have agenda item number two, Ms. Lou Sarato permitting a development director's subdivision regulations, infrastructure requirements for manufactured home communities. Review and discuss.
Good morning. So, I hope you guys got copies of the proposed regulations. These are completely different than what we have right now. Do you have?
Regulations, but I don't have about the manufactured.
Those aren't very long, yeah. Those aren't very long.
They're in your book.
They should be in your book.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay.
You have all the notes from Commissioner Martin? I?
I did, add them to my notes. They're on my paper here.
Do you have his notes?
His notes, yes. Uh huh. Um, no, I didn't get any notes from Commissioner Aiken. Like I said, these are completely different than the ones that we have right now. These are way more thorough. I'll just go over a couple of notes that I have on mine that we would like to see edits and changes on, and possibly get your opinion. To start off with, we're no longer gonna do the non-standard plats. So when people come in for variances to split their land, we won't be doing that. That's gonna be considered a second-tier development. So you can do a second-tier development with at least four tracks. And that's if it doesn't have any roads on it.
So?
Just concerning the manufactured homes, or?
This is for the subdivision, the regulations.
Okay. So is this one of the recommendations by Mr. Bass that he helped us with?
Yes.
Okay.
This is one of the regulations. And we polled, you know, engineers in the area and other people, and then not a lot of people do non-standard plats. It's just not known anymore, so we're changing it up to the second-tier development. And that's if it doesn't have any roads, no infrastructure. This is just cutting up four pieces for lots. So, uh, but they?
That doesn't apply to family-splitting land?
No, because that still falls under the exemption. Although there will be a change with the family, um, which we're gonna have to stay in contact with our county clerk. So that if they do split it up amongst family, there has to be a two-year period where they can't turn around and resell it, which is kind of the way that some developers or some people have been going around this, uh, our regulations right now. They split it up between family, then they turn around and sell it.
So, um, that I'm clear. You have a person that has a 200-acre ranch out here. They're not under the rules of the subdivision rules or regulations. They wanna put two or three houses on their 100-acre ranch. Remember, we had this one deal?
Yes.
And the gentleman was wondering why. He says, "I'm not a developer, it's my property."
Yes, so?
I just want the people to know, if they're listening, you know, that's, that's an exception, correct?
Well, yes, it is an exception, and also, um, Texas Local Government Code states that we can't, um, have lot restrictions as, as... How many residences can be on a family plot, on our family lot?
Just so that they know, 'cause?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So again, that goes into that two years of... Basically, they can't sell that, that piece of land for two years. So if you get it to a family member, you have to prove that family member, and then...
So it's deeded to a family member?
Yes, it would have to be, well, no. The residences, they can be all family. But if you're splitting it, it has to be deeded to a family member.
All right.
So if somebody owns 10 acres and wants to split it three ways, are they considered a developer?
No. Not, well, are they splitting it amongst family, or are they splitting it, they're gonna split it to sell it?
To sell it.
They will be considered a developer according to our regulations, but that would definitely be a second-tier development, to where they don't, um, have to do as much infrastructure. So I have the... In a second-tier development, uh, you need a survey, you do need certification that there's water availability, you do need a certification for setback lines, which is different from what we do right now, and a certificate, uh, dedication for utility easements, and a certificate, I guess it would be from our driveway inspector, uh, confirming in the installation of culverts. So it's kind of like a survey. You don't have to do an actual plat. We will take a survey if you're gonna do, uh, 10 acres and you're splitting it into three. So it's almost like the variance process. But it does give you more leeway, because before it was only two, and then, then you were doing a subdivision. So these kind of just meet us in the middle. Did you have a question for me, Genevieve?
I would imagine you all have to stay with the county clerk.
What do you mean?
So I'm suggesting we probably have to cross-train someone at the clerk's office just to be aware of any kind of land split that comes through your office. We do get a lot of people, they just survey it out and go file it, and according to them, they're done, that's it. So we need to be able to communicate and catch situations like that.
Okay, 'cause that's, yeah, that's not something we look for when we're, we file a lot of documents.
Yeah, I know.
We can't go through each page, I mean, we, to make sure it's certified, things like that. Grand tour, grantee, but not...
So as long as we get it flagged at your department, we can pick it up on ours. So if it's any kind of split of land, flag us or let us know, and then we can review it and make sure that it's, that it's okay to be filed.
Okay, 'cause that's what I'm saying, like, that's not something we look?
No, I know. It'll, it's, it's gonna take cooperation from both our departments to get this done.
That was one of the things, making sure that family's dating over that two year. So, I mean, dating's what it is, making sure she's selling.
Okay. 'Cause I'm just saying, that's gonna take a lot longer for us with each document that comes in, to be looking for that. That's not something we look for.
We're gonna have to figure out a way to refine that, or, like I said, as, if it has anything to do with the split of land, if you could just flag it and send it our way, we'll take care of it. You know, 'cause, I mean, we don't expect you to know or be completely familiar with the regulations or at what point there are, they are in that process. But as long as you let us know, then, then we can look into it.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, I mean, I, it's something we can do, but it's not, I mean, I, I don't know that, that we have, I have the staff to be able to sit there and look through those documents like that. They, they wouldn't have the time.
Yeah, and I completely understand, these regulations tax not just your department, but my department a lot. Like, I'm not sufficiently staffed to, but, you know, it's for the good of the county.
So I can't say that it's something that we can do. I can't, because I, I can't.
We need to come up with a plan.
We do.
Find a, find a way to come up with a plan.
And of course, it's difficult, because you guys are here, we're over there, and people are like, "Oh, it was fine with the county," because we've got it filed through the clerk, but that's not necessarily the case, you know? It's not your job to be looking through all the development paperwork or all the, all the deeds and reading them. So, uh, trying to figure out the best way to work together. The only thing that I could come up with is calling us, is letting, or sending them our way, and we clear it before it gets filed.
Can I offer a suggestion? This is something we can discuss, because if, what I understand, the county clerk is concerned with having to review every filing and it becoming burdensome, is that perhaps if someone is filing something, they fill out a really quick little form. Is this involving a split? Is this involving, uh, a subdivision of family? Yes or no? And as soon as they say yes, you just flag it and send it to her. And that way, it's not extra, it's not extra time of your staff of having to review every single document, but actually putting it on the filer to notify you, yes, this involves a split, then we're sending it to them. If they just say, "No, it's not a split, it's not," then you just, you just go forward with it, but it might save you time. And, you know, I'll discuss that with you of how to best do that, to put that on the actual customer, the actual filer, so that they make the representation instead of putting all this extra burden on your office, and then they get the information that they need to be able to proceed.
Well, 'cause even then, if they say no, and it is?
They say no, it's not your fault, they said no.
And I can't reject a filing, because they're not...
No, but there is a fine, $500 a day for when it is filed illegally. I mean, you go ahead and file it.
It puts the burden on the actual filer and not on your office for failure to catch it, or because they lied to you, or something like that. And that way?
If you have a piece of a document saying that they said, "No, it wasn't,"
Right, then it's not yours.
Then we got something to go back on them with.
And you don't, you don't have to have staff go through 10, 15, 20 documents.
That wouldn't be part of the official public, like, I couldn't just hang on to that piece of paper. First of all, having them do that piece of paper when they come in, that's already more time. But where would that paper even go? I couldn't put it with the public, with the official record.
It would be more of an internal document, but it's something that then you would refer to them, and they would take over. And then they, they could keep record of whatever they're, whatever is done.
I think we just need to...
Whichever way you find it best, I understand, you know, it, it's a lot, but whichever way you find it best to point them back to our direction, what, point them back towards us, we'll work with you. You know, uh, these regulations really work on illegal splits. So, uh, they're really trying to cut down on anybody that just goes around splitting up their land that's under 10 acres. So, uh, it's not just with the clerk's office, with the utility companies as well. I mean, my office is gonna be busy just making certificates, 'cause they can't provide utilities into a subdivision until we give them a certificate saying that they're good to go. So even, it's gonna take working together with everybody, the utility companies, with the clerk's office. I mean, that's why I have my whole department here, because it addresses the septic inspector and the driveway inspector. It's gonna take a work from all of us.
Evelyn, if we make that form and put a disclaimer at the bottom, isn't that forging a government document, falsifying a government document, chargeable? If they lie on it?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And there's also...
Because this is, this is really just discussion today. I don't under, I don't think that we're actually gonna take action, but, you know, I'll be happy to meet with both of you or either one of you and say, "How can we streamline this so it doesn't become burdensome for their office?" But at the same time, you're getting the information you need to be able to share compliance with the regulations, so.
So, uh, that's just one of the changes that we'll see, uh, with these new regulations. There's gonna be some small changes with the application. They are gonna have to sign acknowledgements of everything that's being turned in. This whole process is gonna be a lot of acknowledgement. Like, they cannot have a well unless they have a letter from TCEQ, they have certificates stating that they have groundwater available and it's, you know, usable. It's gonna take a lot of certifications from everybody in order to get a subdivision going.
And that, we gotta talk to Evergreen as well.
Yes.
They have to get the application, they gotta go through Evergreen, uh, and get that signed off as well, not only TCEQ. So there's a lot that, 'cause we are gonna run out of water. We just had Travis Frisky in here the, last week about all that, right? It's just another point.
So when you were talking about the division between family members, these regulations, uh, say that they can be split up to four. Like, if you're, you own the 200 acres, and you wanna split up your land between family, it gives you the option only to do four tracks.
Unless you do a subdivision.
Unless you do a subdivision.
Or acreage.
Mm-hmm. Anything that, um, has streets, whether it's cut up within 10 acres or not, is gonna be a subdivision, and it will have to go through our department. So we have those big land developers that come and just split up their land into 10 acres, but then they put a road through it. Well, as soon as you put a road through it, then it's a development that has to come through Wilson County.
And roads are 70-foot right away.
Yes, and we're trying to change that to where, 'cause these say 60, but our suggestion is that the, uh, right-of-way should be 70 feet.
Or as our current regulations, if we have as of today.
Like I said, we will be requiring a lot of certificates, a lot of acknowledgements from the utility companies, from any kind of providers, from the developers, from the engineers. A lot of certification is gonna go in with these regulations.
This is why we need to be hunting for an engineer within the county, because we have 30 days. Once the plat, once permitting office has everything they need, and, I mean, everything that is required out of these regulations, we have 30 days, and our engineer has to be on the ball to do that. Whoever's listening, we need an engineer, I'll tell you. Because we are falling behind with our standard.
We also have a portion here that says, so any kind of replats to subdivisions, it's gonna apply to the new regulations. So you can't use the replat, the grandfathering clause when it comes to replats. If you're gonna cut up the subdivision in a different way, it's kinda come through our, our regulations. So that's for amendments and replats of our, our current subdivisions. This one does, um, the definition for development in these regulations, they've always been this way, but it, I guess it's having us focus more also the moving of dirt. You know, not just actual developments, but if you're, uh, gonna do excavation, dredging, grading, filing, you know, filling land, all that will be considered a development and has to be approved through the county. Just to assure that whether you're in a floodplain, or it's not gonna be a nuisance to anybody in the surrounding area. With these, um, usually the way that we've been doing it is that after two years that we, uh, have a subdivision going on, the roads get conveyed over to the county. And I know you have that option, whether you wanna accept them or not, but with these regulations, the court has to be petitioned to accept the roads. So that's something the developer will have to do, come up with a petition to ask the court to take it, and then, of course, it'll be your decision whether you wanna accept them or not. These involve, before we had our subdivision regulations, and then we had lodging regs. So we're throwing everything out the window. These are gonna be subdivision regulations, and these right here are gonna address RV, divisions or anything like that, tiny homes. All these, all that is gonna be in these subdivision regulations.
Page 11, I know we talked a little bit about grandfathering, uh, whose comment is that on the right? Does this mean no grandfathering on master plan?
Oh, that was me.
Okay. So what's the recommendation of Mr. Bass?
I haven't gotten his opinion yet.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and these are still being edited, they're not final. We're still suggesting stuff. A lot of our IFC 2021 is not plugged into these regulations, so, uh, we're having to go back in there and plug them in, um, as we go.
I know you talked about roads already, can we back up to firefighting with that? What is our current, uh, footage between hydrants? Is it 750 or 500?
It's 500 currently, but we're trying to change it to 750, because that's what IFC 2021 is asking for.
And you'll see that on page 20, so, just highlighting. But if we're adopting these rules and regulations, uh, with IFC, we need to make sure our standard is at standard.
Yeah, so these don't really focus on the, um, the fire code that we've adopted. So like I said, we will have to go in and start plugging them in where we will have to ask for a six-inch main. You know, this one's just saying per TCEQ standards, but we're trying to meet fire standards, or fire suppression standards. It also addresses wastewater treatment plants, which is something that we don't have in our current regulations, since we are seeing more developments come in with suggested wastewater treatment plants. So this one actually puts down the rules and, and the certifications and everything that they'll need to submit to us if that's what they're proposing. We didn't have that in our current ones, so it's kind of lenient at this point.
Is, is there a way to put in the regulations that they need to, like, let us know before they submit to TCEQ, just so we're aware? 'Cause before, 'cause they can submit to TCEQ, and then we know after it was approved from TCEQ, we don't know when they, right?
We don't have anything currently in place, and there's nothing in here, but we probably should find, we always find out after the fact from TCEQ what's being mulled over in that office. So it also addresses subdivisions that are trying to do, um, individual water wells. It's gonna need information, we're gonna need certifications from Evergreen in order to do that, that there's the, there's sufficient water. Like I said, a lot of checking into infrastructure.
And it, it says in there that there's a log report for every well? We've never done that. We don't have any info on any wells.
I know.
If we're gonna do that, we probably, when we do, decide whatever, um, program that we're getting, that might be something we need to think about too, as a way to be able to log with us.
Yeah, like I said, this is really gonna double our office's work. It does give the option for developers to use wells if they'd like, but they'd, they'd have to, uh, meet all the standards that they're asking for in these regulations. We're requiring pump tests. That's another, uh, something else that our office will have to keep track of.
Is it, um, when the, like, after the fact, when the subdivisions are done, they're on public water, and then they're putting in wells for irrigation? Is that something that's?
That's not allowed anymore. There's water, if the plat states that there's water availability and it's signed by the utility company, then it has to have a note on the plat stating that you cannot have wells. Yes?
No irrigation wells?
Go ahead, Carl, let's see.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, man, you can.
Oh, yeah, Carl, I'm sorry, I turned my interest to water. Um, we should probably let folks, if they wanna put wells for irrigation, my answer is always yes. Because it's better to dump untreated water in the ground versus treated water on the ground. Because that leaves our tanks, and, so I would say if they want better irrigation wells, by all means.
And we're talking about a four-inch private?
Yes, sir, like four gallon, uh...
Four-inch well?
Really small, right?
Yeah, 25 gallon.
The only thing that we will require is just an inspection, or a customer service inspection, which is a TCEQ thing to make sure that well water was considered inferior water, is not directly connected to the public water. That's all we'll...
Well, in this case, it would be up to the developer, because if they decide to put that on the plat, and it'll be in all their deeds, that they can't have a well, unless, you know, they want.
Well, if you spell it out plainly for irrigation only?
Uh huh.
And so, something to consider on that. I mean, I agree with you to an extent, but if we got development that's all half-acre...
Well, let's see, that's, that's...
That's where we're gonna have, we have to be very specific. Your acres, your acreage is what I'm getting at, your...
So for, I guess, so I guess it would be dependent on acreage size? Because with quarter acre, the post stamp, like business, I mean, they, they can do a replat, purple line, you know, reclaim. This is, I'm thinking of a larger acreage?
Yes, yeah, the larger acre.
Have to tie that to a certain acreage. It's a good idea. Both of y'all's points are great ideas. It's just a simple fact that we gotta...
So I'll put that down as a suggested edit on that, to give us more leeway.
That goes back into, where's, where's your sewer lines, where's all this, you know?
Yeah, where's something in? I mean, so is, like, something that, like, the property owner needs to log with us? They put in an irrigation well just to, you know?
Anytime that it has a well on the property, it'll have to be logged by us.
And it will have to meet the qualifications, so far away from the sewer, so far away...
Yeah. All the lot restrictions actually go through, it would be through our septic inspector, because we have to make sure that there's enough space for septic systems. Like I said, this does assign a lot of work to our septic inspector, sorry, Michelle. One of the things, though, that is on here that we do plan on changing is that, under her department, it does say that she's, uh, responsible for ensuring the statutes like of street width and weather capacity, which is something usually our fire marshals would do, but, um, that would ultimately fa, uh, fall on our commissioners or whoever's doing our fire inspections. 'Cause our developments have to go through our fire inspector as well. It addresses the utility easements. It's asking for 15 feet. Currently, we do ask for 25 feet in the front, so I do have that down as a proposed edit to have, um, a setback of 25 in the front, and then the sides would be 15 and the back for 15. And that's because the utilities that are, um, on the surface have five feet of the property line, and the subsurface utilities have 10 feet of the property line. So that's why we're giving them 15 on the sides, which we are getting pushback from other developers, 'cause a lot of them wanna do five feet.
Yes, so, a suggestion, so what we do, since we have, um, like in Lake Valley, the quarter acre, a lot of that's coming? We have two different easements, so for the smaller lots, it's five foot, and for acre or more, it's 15.
So you're okay with the five, uh, the five feet?
Because, I mean, on the smaller lots, it's not, you can't take 15, I mean, 'cause that, like, reduces the ability of the owner to do things in a smaller lot. The smaller lots, we're okay with five.
Something we'd look at, because, uh, we had to do a lot of this not long ago, right? And we talked to O'Keels, we didn't bring you into it, because it wasn't your area. We talked to O'Keels, finding out kind of where they need to be off the road and/or off of the sidewalk, making sure you can get a backhoe, making sure you can get an excavator, whatever you need in there to fix that, that main line. And then where Phelps needs to drop their pad for their electrical, off of your line, we wanna make sure that's not on the property owner as well. we want to make sure that's not on the property owner as well. So, that's a lot of where that 25 foot comes in, especially if there's a sidewalk in there. It's going to eat all that up or you're going to be in their front yard tearing it up and more issues, right? So, but that's, that's the reason we're talking about all that. And yes, with smaller lots, there are certain things we got to look at addressing, but yes. But that is something that we ran into the other day is knowing where Phelps is going to be dropping the line. So, going from there.
Well, miss it difficult too is with existing subdivisions. Near subdivisions going in, if we're telling them, hey, you can do this and it's a lot easier. It's a lot of us with existing, with existing infrastructure. But going forward, if they're...
We're also requiring the six-inch mains for connections. That's going to be part of the IFC 2021 that we have to abide by, but we're doing hydrants and filler plugs and we're no longer doing the storage tanks for $30,000 gallons. It just wasn't proving to be helpful at all when it came to fire safety. I have a suggested edit for entrances for subdivisions. I don't remember what the amount was that we have right now. Commissioner King, do you remember how many homes need two entrances for a subdivision?
100, 1-0-0.
100? So, any subdivision that has 100 homes requires two entrances.
Text dot, I talked to text dot and with text dot, they're looking at 750 feet between because of accidents and everything else on 181, 97, wherever you're driving. So, 750 feet, whenever that person turns their blinker on, they're going to be turning down there. Vice closer entrances, it's a blinker, they're passing two entrances, but we're kind of in accidents. So, that is one thing that text dot is looking at, 750 feet between your ingress, egress exits out of that subdivision off of main highway. And we're going to have to do that along county roads too. We need to think about that. As our county roads, people are flying up and down them as well, so we got to be smart about that too with these subdivisions.
So, one of the notes that Commissioner Martin had made was to insert the current design standards for the roads. This one doesn't address roads as much as ours do right now. I am on 21. I'm zooming by.
Well, just so they, we all know where you're at. Talking, I know where you're at.
So, that was his suggestion that we plug in our road standards for right now because they put in a lot of work to the ones that we have right now and these don't really address it as much. So...
But do we need to insert?
We need to insert our, yes.
Into here?
Yes.
And that's why we're here today, to talk about what we need to take out of our requirements and insert into these.
That's correct. I believe further on ahead, he had made a note, something about the sub base size. We're going wider. So, rather than 20, it would be 24, I believe.
24 feet is what we're currently...
For the sub base?
Well, 24 feet wide for the road, for the pavement.
Okay, I've got to check in these because these might say that it doesn't need to be as wide, but we are asking for a wider sub base. We also, his note was to insert our road sign requirements. They're also not in these, but we have a whole attachment or ones that we can just plug in.
Developers need to get all the signage in there prior to the county accepting the roads or when the subdivision is built.
These regulations put down a lot of verbiage to protect the county. It doesn't tie us down to having to accept any roads. So, it does protect us, but of course it does, it's in the favor of the developer, you know, with our timeline and all that. The timeline that we have for construction is going to stay the same when it comes to these regulations, but they will have to provide us with like a scope of work, a construction plan, letting us know when they're going to be kicking off each project. That's something that, or estimated time that they'll have to submit with their application.
Is 911 addressing required on the plat prior to us voting on it?
This one says yes. Now, this one talks about NORTEX. We're taking that part out because we don't use NORTEX for our 911 addressing. But we are asking that that gets done with the plat before it gets filed. So, this is where Commissioner Martin was saying the subgrade must be at least 28 feet. That's what he's asking for because it must be wider than the roadway. So, we're asking for roadways to be, what are we doing? Is it 24 or are we doing 26 for the roads?
24.
24 for the roads, so...
Pavement will be 24 and then the...
Yes, so then...
Just have the road drop off at the edge of the pavement. So, that's why we're asking for a little bit wider.
Yeah, so the subgrade would be 28. It does give you standards for the flexible base and all that, but like always, we're going to defer to geotechnical reports. So, whatever the geotech tells you, you need on that property or that road, then that's what we're going with. Just because our soils here in Wilson County vary so much. You know, you're in sand and then you turn a corner, then you're in clay. So, we're going to heavily rely on geotechnical services for, to establish how the road will be built. We do have our, these regulations out to our engineers so that they can revise them, see if they see anything or they catch anything that they can tweak as far as drainage and road construction and all that.
Where do you think back from?
I have not heard anything yet, but they, they do have them. They are reviewing them. Same thing with the drainage standards. We will be plugging in a lot of our standards into these because they're not as specific as ours. And we do have a lot of drainage issues here in Wilson County. Our drainage must conform to the 100-year storm event, which it currently does, but on our plats, we are asking for it to show, or at least in their drainage study, shorter storm events, not just the 100-year flood. Like I said, these regulations also address RV parks, tiny homes and campgrounds, the infrastructure for all those, which we used to have separate regulations for that. I'm skipping ahead. Let me know if you have any questions though. We are asking for developers to have a pre-application meeting and this would be 15 days prior to submitting their application for a plat. Currently, they just show up and bring a plat and submit it. Or they have the meeting at the same time, but I think these regulations are asking for 15 days prior, which would really help us because there's a lot of stuff that maybe would be nixed 15 days prior for them trying to submit an application that's just not going to work out. It does ask for a lot of communication with the commissioners when it comes to subdivision applications. Again, it puts a really stringent timeline on our department. We have only a certain amount of days to get back to them and let them know whether it's incomplete or not. We only have a certain amount of days to get it reviewed, to get it put into court, you know, and if we don't meet these timelines, then they can have a conditional approval of their plat, which is something that we don't.
And not having an in-house engineer really puts a strain on us because we have an engineering company that works for us, but we can't demand that they get it done within certain timelines.
That's correct. All we can do is supply them with what the state is asking from us. When it comes to the plat application, like I said, it's asking that they include a construction schedule. So, that should come in handy to the commissioners so that they know what's going on or what part of the construction they'll be on when it comes to the developments. Yes?
Just slightly with the construction bidding, timelines for the construction, like for when it's, when the, they get a notice to proceed, work begins and when the work's supposed to end? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
A lot of times...
Estimated.
Right, a lot of times developers won't get that until contracts have been signed and a bid goes out. So, like for us, once they get through y'all's current process and the court approves it, then they come back to us if they're working to get our water, sign our contract and then only then is when, for example, if they're working, if they're having us do it, we go off a bid. So, that might...
So, you suggest we wait on that construction schedule until after the plat is filed?
The estimate's fine, but it needs to be just that, an estimate. So, I'm not sure how to capture that.
We're just trying to stay in contact with the contractors a little bit better because in the past, the contractors don't contact the commissioners of the county. We don't know when they're going to do this or that. So, it's a hard, it's hard for us to go and inspect something and we don't have a schedule on what they're doing.
As long as, I guess as long as it's an estimate, because a lot of times they don't have actual the bid, you know, how long that contractor's going to take to do that project.
After what process do you think we could get a better estimate of time?
See, it's really hard to get that, not until money's exchanged is when you're going to get or a bid goes out. And that's the hard part. But an estimate, an estimate's like a good, a good faith estimate?
Okay.
Maybe something like that.
Yeah, an estimate and then something that they understand. Contact us and let us know.
Once, so you can have a good faith estimate, then they're required to come back once a bid is put out?
The communication.
Right, to let, okay, for how it actually, how long it's actually going to take versus what the estimate was like after the bid is put out, something.
We're just trying to look for a little more communication so we can be aware and can come and inspect as the process happens. Before, we had no idea, nobody inspected, nobody checked. So, we're just trying to be a little more involved so we can stay on top of what's going on.
The county will not take responsibility over public use areas. So, if a subdivision's coming in and they're going to have a detention pond or a park, that means that they'd have to have their own homeowners association because the county will not be responsible to maintain that.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's language we can put in there to make it more clear to these homeowners associations, they cannot disband a homeowners association once the subdivision is built. They cannot demand that they should cut the detention ponds. You can't believe how many calls we get wanting us to come and maintain.
And we do have a lot of people that call in subdivisions that want us to enforce their covenants and restrictions. We don't do that. As the county, we just ensure that the infrastructure of the development when it first gets off. Once they have a homeowners association, it is their responsibility. If their homeowners association has disbanded, then it becomes a civil matter. Then they need to get together with their neighbors and put a petition together and take it to civil court. It doesn't involve the county. We can't make a judgment on that.
Because I've had several of them call me and want to disband their HOA because they want to pay the taxes and I tell them, you can't, it's part of your subdivision.
So, with these regulations, it does state that you must state on the plat the use of the property. So, you need a, on the plat, if you have a lot, we need to know whether it's going to be residential, whether it's going to be commercial. You can't just be a proposed either or, you know. So, if you're going to divide land and you're going to plat it out, then it has to state on the plat the use of the land.
The reason for all of this, just so everybody knows, I have a subdivision in my precinct and Carlos knows about it. The roads were so poorly constructed years and years ago, there was no checking by the county. The roads, a bunch of them were not accepted into the county road system. So, now they're private lanes. We've got homeowners that are complaining to the county that the roads are not fixed, but they were never accepted because they were so poorly built to begin with. So, that's what this is all about, is to stop stuff like that from happening where we've got subdivisions that are poorly constructed and not inspected and...
That's correct.
Try to keep that from happening today.
That being said, anything that comes through us is suggesting for a private lane, whether it be for family or, you know, addressing purposes. Any private lane that comes through us, we're asking for road agreements. We want something to get filed with a county clerk that says who's responsible for maintenance of this road. You know, because we just can't say, well, the county, it's not us. But we need to have something on file that says, well, whose is it? You know, what are the meets and bounds of the road? What, who's responsible for it? If there's an accident, you know, who do they go to? Because we don't have a lot of that information right now.
So, I go through out there, people call me and they want to know, why is the county not fixing my road? Well, it's not a county road. It's in a subdivision, why isn't it in the county roads? If we don't have these rules, it just causes a lot of headaches down there.
Along with that, I got a subdivision right now. Developer went out, put roads in, put signs up, asked for our regulations and somebody went and knocked all the signs down, stole all the signs, everything's done. So, if there's a wreck on that road, who do we hold accountable? You know, he did put, he did put cameras up and everything else to see who's going in and out of there, but, you know, he puts the signs back up and they're stolen and broken off again. So, that's what we have, the theft in this county, that's a problem as well. But they have to have signs up for this to be a public road, which is not a county road at this point. What kinds of things going on?
We, prior to this, I believe we had 60 days to approve a plat. Again, 30 days to get the whole process going.
Whenever you're saying the whole process, that means the application is 100% complete.
Complete and the plat gets filed within those 30 days. It does say that if the commissioner's court fails to timely approve or approve with conditions, then they, the commissioner's court must refund the greater or unexpended portion of any application fee, like 50% of their application fee back. Or they get conditional approval. Financial guarantees, I'll be sending that to our county treasurer so she can revise that, see if there's anything that you would like to see added to, to that. see if there's anything that you would like to see added to that. So before replats, we're just an application, they would come through our department. It's a petition now and it has to come through the court. So they don't just get to come to us and say, hey, we're gonna change the lot lines in the subdivision. It's gonna be something that has to be brought to commissioners' court and petitioned to ask to change the lot lines in a subdivision. I'm gonna skip ahead to where the conditions of a variance. As our attorney suggested, not to give any variances unless they can truly prove a hardship. We've been very lenient with our variances, and that has really, has come back to get us.
Give us an example.
Our current subdivision, where years before we saw a plat, we gave a variance for setbacks. Well, we didn't see a plat. We don't know, you know, they didn't have any extenuating circumstances. Why should we have given that variance? So that's pretty much what our attorney and these regulations are saying. You have, you must prove a hardship in order to attain a variance.
We aren't seeing a lot of this right now, the economy, the way it is.
Sell some property off to make ends meet.
Mom and daughter or something left to try to figure out how to make ends meet. And they're wanting to cut up ten or twenty acres and sell, you know, part of it off.
Of course, it'll be discretion of the review committee and the commissioners' court, but again, the, it's up to them to prove. The burden is on them to prove.
Is the, are you gonna up the amount of times that you commit meets with deadlines?
That's one of the things that we had talked to the committee about, just because we currently meet once a month, and with this timeline, it's impossible. Thirty days, that's how long we have, you know? So we're gonna have to look into meeting on an as-is basis, or at least twice a month, in order to review some of these developments.
So these new regulations put a strain on everybody, if you want to know the truth.
Yes.
But I think they're a necessary evil if we want to keep control of the development that's going on.
With that, that's where we need SS, we need Oak Hills, we need our water, we need Phelps there to answer these questions whenever they're bringing them to us, these variances. Because once again, I don't know where you're set back, you know, where you need to be on everything. So, but we have to have everybody at that meeting, not just the county. I need utilities. If there's gas or anything going in, we gotta have them there. If they don't show up, then we accept it. Falls back on them. I tried to say that.
So it does ask for a lot of communication. One of the things that's not on here, but we will be talking to our county attorney about, or our TAC attorney, is about fines. We currently have no teeth. So we have people that come in and pull their development permit years after they've already built, but they need a septic system. Now they need a septic system. So now they pull their development permit. Well, that's when it comes through us, and then we find out, well, it's already built. It's already built in the floodplain, it's already built in the setbacks. So there's no consequences to people that do it the opposite way. So we're suggesting some kind of fine, whether it comes to doubling the development permit if it's been built already. Or enforce some other kind of fines and applications for people that split up land also.
What about the incident I had the other day where I drove up, just happened to be looking down on a bunch of county roads, and I find eighteen wheeler loads of gravel dumped in the county road in the right of way. They don't have a driveway permit. What do we, what do we do with that kind of stuff?
Sounds like that was a donation to the county.
They did. I called sheriff's department. I called the sheriff's department and they did come out and cite them for illegal dumping. I don't know if the guy ever paid the ticket or not, but we have people that do that all the time. They just dump it in the middle of the road, and I walk out there and the guy's got a box cat with teeth scraping it off the county road.
So currently, Jerry Lee is taking her code enforcement? She's going to code enforcement, so we can have that.
She came out and helped me the other day with that situation.
She's amazing.
I looked at me, you mean, you mean we need a permit out here in this county?
If you need an enforcer, I definitely suggest her.
She did a great job the other day helping me on that deal.
She's little, but very intimidating.
She helped me on a driveway that we almost ripped out because that is the county's, we can't do that.
And thanks to the sheriff's department for sending somebody out and citing him for illegal dumping because it needed to happen.
So like I said, that's one of the big things that we would like to have our attorney add to our regulations, is to impose fines so we can work together with the sheriff's office, you know, for situations like illegal dumping. Or being noncompliant to a certain point with development. And I think I breezed through most of them. The back of that is all applications, which are still to be revised. I'm not on board with the ones that he has. It would change ours completely different, so we might, I might tweak those. But I think I've gone through most of the changes in these regulations.
I'd like to see what KCI has to say once they review and see, I mean, I don't know what we need to move out of our current regulations into these, but I'd like to see what they say as well.
Absolutely. As soon as I get their review back, I will share it with the court so that everybody will know what changes they propose.
If I may, Appendix L, page sixty-six, we don't have any streets that are gonna be twenty-five miles an hour. You call for a TIA, right?
Yes, we are. Any large, well, a hundred homes or more will ask for a traffic impact analysis.
They have to provide that.
I think Commissioner Martin said that you had to be a municipality to be twenty-five miles an hour, otherwise...
Municipalities only, yes, sir.
Otherwise, we would be, minimum speed would be thirty miles an hour, which I think we're...
We're good.
Yeah, my, all of my subdivisions are at thirty, and my county roads are at thirty-five, except for two roads in my precinct.
I just wanted to make y'all aware that we will not have any twenty-five. That would be bumped to thirty.
Yes.
Proper, but we will have a TIA on that as well. Also, Penix P. is in Papa. Fees?
What page is that?
Seventy-one?
Seventy-one. I'm glad to know, because I had somebody call me the other day and request me to drop a speed limit to twenty-five in a subdivision. I said, no, I'm not.
So I put a ten mile an hour sign, I still do thirty. Take the ten mile an hour. Fees, are we updating those to our current fees? What are we doing with that?
Yes, I think, did I have another paper on there? Let me bring my paper with it.
Had a discussion about that the other day.
Yeah, just, we're, we're probably gonna revise the fees. I think these are more.
Well, and there's, yeah, there was a couple of changes with some of this stuff. But that's why I was bringing it to your attention as well, before those, we are looking at fees as well.
Okay. If you don't have any impact for them doing something they shouldn't do, they're just gonna continue doing it, in my opinion.
Trying to skim through the back of it, see if there's anything that sticks out that I should mention. Again, I do plan on revising the applications. But we really need to push. We're trying to see if, as a department, we could possibly put together a workshop to work with real estate agents and developers in the area to let them know there are restrictions. I see a lot of advertisements about, it's in the county, no restrictions. Well, then they come to us and they're like, well, why are we paying for permits? That's not exactly the case, you know? That doesn't mean it's no restriction. So we're trying to see if we could put together possibly a workshop so we could address concerns like that. You know, like, yes, you need a development permit. Yes, you need a septic permit. If you're gonna connect into the county road, you need a driveway permit. And a lot of people get upset about that, but once you explain it to them, a little bit of education goes a long way. They're like, you don't like your county roads? Every time that you're turning off that county road, you're tearing up the road. So the only way that us as a county can generate money to get those fixed is to impose driveway permits. So that's where your money is going to, your driveway money is going to fix your roads.
And what is a driveway permit now? I'm sorry.
It's two hundred and fifty.
Let me know when you want to do that. We can do it at the expo, set it up, workshop there.
Yeah.
Set it on the agenda for court.
Because we have, I mean, half of the calls that we get through our department are real estate agents, and they're asking just the same questions over and over. If we can address it, we can put it out there, you know, we can let the public know. It's really not a lot. We have three permits, you know? Compared to other, compared to the city, compared to other counties, it's not a lot. We are asking for fire permits now, but that's only if you're a commercial building and you're in the county. Does anybody have any questions? Suggestions? Yes?
One suggestion, so for the court, do y'all have any, like, funds or something set aside? Do you help, I guess, should these regulations go into effect, the thirty-day thing, to maybe get some additional technology or employee or something like that? Because it sounds like y'all are probably gonna need either work to do this. Do we even employ technology successfully to be able to do more with less? Specifically, like, if you're gonna be having to go between different departments, maybe a SharePoint or Laserfish or something that's online so that it can be accessed by different folks at different...
The only thing that we're looking at right now, and that's Maddie spearheading it, is she's looking for something for our permits. If we take the floodplain permits out of the way, then it opens up more time to work on development. So people are like, I've turned in my floodplain permit three days ago, why is it not signed? And I'm like, well, that's not the only thing that we do in this department. You know, we have other stuff that we handle. But she's spearheading it, she's looked at some...
I think three that I've gotten folks from, and they range from ten thousand yearly to thirty thousand.
So that'd be something we need to look at when we start our budget cycle here in March?
Yes, to, and this would enable them to do their permits online, you know? Upload their stuff online, pay online.
And you're only talking a couple of months from now, so we need to get ready. And then let me know, do the research on that so that the court can make a decision.
She's got plenty of research and stuff that she's been working on.
I think that would save us a lot of time with them being able to file their permits online, pay online. It would save us time and labor.
Yeah, and logging. It automatically logs everything as soon as you're uploading your own information.
Okay.
So... Exactly. Right now, the only way that we do open records is they email us. We have to get an email, and then we have a certain amount of days to get their... With this program, open records requests would be handled by them, and then we can keep track of who's asking for open records.
And I think a lot of the programs that you can, you can go into different departments, you can all work together. It's unlimited features.
So that's something that we're looking into. And permits right now, they're all in person, you know, pen, and we only take checks, cash, or money order. So...
Streamline this would actually pay for the program, correct?
I'm sorry?
If we went to this program, it expedited it quicker, it actually paid for the program, this...
Yes.
It would save time and labor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would save time and labor and it would eventually pay for itself.
Up the EOC whenever they take all the fire permits as well.
Yes.
For like thirty a day.
I've already had a coupleteen calls about us recently, weren't bad.
Yes, we got plenty of those calls this weekend. So if anybody doesn't have any questions, if you do think of something after the fact and you want to send me an email, a suggestion, these are not final edits, these are still in the work. We're trying to get these done hopefully by the beginning of the year or soon after the year starts. We're trying to get these in place. But if anything comes to mind that'll streamline this or make this easier, by all means, shoot me an email. And we'll add it on there.
The reason we needed this and have this discussion and bring it out is because we need to get back with our attorney as possible. But that's why we needed inputs, by just going back and forth to him. And that, that office over there, so, because via phone, via, if we go to Austin or he drives down to us, a lot of different things going on, so we're trying to minimize whatever's going on so we have everybody. Right, there's been a lot of work into this and it's dissipating off with everybody, commissioners.
And as, as well as keeping the community and the commissioners in the loop of proposed changes.
You have one more to go over?
Yes, manufactured homes.
That should be pretty quick.
I promise.
Is this, we've already had enough in place, or is this an addition to?
This is an addition. Like I said, we're scrapping our current regulations. So since we don't have an IDP, we're going with the manufactured homes. But it is pretty much a lot of the same stuff that was in our lodging regs. But it does cover more infrastructure than our, the ones that we have right now do. We have developers or, you know, property owners in the area that come in and they want to split up their property and they want to put in residences, but they own them. So this is who, this is geared to. So mobile home parks owned by one owner, and they rent them out. These are the regulations that they'd have to abide by.
So how does that differ from down the road on ninety-seven where you have the man camp? Those little homes?
Like Marcelina and...
Yeah, Marcelina.
So they, these are the ones that they would have to abide by. It's not a lot of pages, so they're pretty straightforward. A lot of the stuff that is on here, we were already asking for. But it does also refer back to our subdivision regulations. So that helps us as a county ensure a lot more infrastructure.
We've had several issues in the county with sewage not being handled properly on these type of sites.
Exactly. And again, another thing that we will discuss with our attorney is fines and penalties for not being in compliance with these.
Yeah, because with no fines, we just keep going out there over and over and over, and they, they don't do anything about it because there's no consequences.
We will make the edit. I believe on this one, it also asks for sixty feet. We're gonna go with the seventy feet, seventy feet of right of way for the, for mobile home parks as well.
Well, if the oil field kicks off like they predict in two years, you're gonna see a big increase in these.
This is exactly why we're passing these.
And we want to try to keep the roads consistent, you know? Seventy feet, we need to be seventy feet with all of them and not different widths and different sizes. And as the fire trucks get bigger, and the ambulances are way bigger today than they were years ago, we just need that type of right of way.
Water standards?
The important reason I ask for that is because any facility that has more than, or that serves more than fifteen folks or has twenty-five connections becomes, or should become its own water system for the state.
Yes, this, this one does say that.
So it does, okay.
Yes, this one does address that. Yes, this one does address that. This one also refers a lot to TCEQ standards, FEMA standards. We're going back to state standards with both of these regulations. So if these mobile home developments will have roads, it's going to refer back to our subdivision regulation standards for roads. Pretty uniform. Any questions on these? I'll send these to you so that you can revise them as well and suggest edits if you have any.
Let me know when you want us to do that workshop, so we can set that up as a public meeting?
Definitely, yes. Yeah, that's something that we've been in talks about, even with our engineers as well, that I believe that's one of the things they suggested we do. Just to get some information out there.
Okay. Evelyn? Good? Okay, thank you, Lucy.
All right, thank you.
Agenda item number three, discuss and take action on purchase of a wood chipper truck to be utilized by all Wilson County Commissioners. Purchase will be made through ARPA funds and capped at 110,000. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Perdola who did the research on this and then I'm going to have some questions for Evelyn just to. We had that one that came in at 98,000, correct? It's available. Yeah, I went above and beyond, so give me, tell us about the three bids that you had. I don't know, they may be in here. No. Did you have it? I know one was at about 107. It was 98.
One in Houston was 98,000. A dealership, Chevy dealership in Houston.
So Evelyn, our question is this, the other two vehicles are out of state. The shipping costs would exceed the 98,000 if we bought the one from here. There is none on the buy board. So is it feasible for us to do a single-source contract on this since it's not on the buy board?
Well, because it's, it's more than $50,000. Normally, the rule is to go out for bids unless there's, there's an exception, so.
Who's going to bid on it?
So that's the. And that, that's what would fall within one of the exceptions, is that there is, there's nobody to bid on it, there's, it's a single source. If Commissioner Perdola researched and looked into other options or whether there was any other availability, reasonable availability, and that doesn't necessarily mean going to somewhere in the 50 states where the cost would be exorbitant, they don't do business in Texas or they would not do business. It's not somebody that we would normally do business in Texas with, then it would fall within one of the exceptions. And so, considering the information that you've provided, Commissioner, I believe that this request would fall within that exception.
And I have the three bids and they're in my computer, you have them too? Okay.
I reviewed the three bids as well, I actually spoke with NAP Chevrolet with Lance Haddop last week to confirm whether or not they were on the buy board or if they had. If they were associated with any purchasing co-op, to which he confirmed that they are not. My concern, in which I shared with Commissioner Perdola and with Ms. Haron, was Kristen and I are not experts in these types of vehicles. So we don't know what to look for in terms of trying to determine whether or not there are any of these vehicles on the buy board as needed by the county. So what I explained to Evelyn was that I, as the auditor, will not confirm that this is a single-source item because the statute's very specific. So that is going to be up to the court for you guys to decide that you're going to consider this a single-source item, which means there is no other vendor that has this specific type of vehicle equipped for the county needs with, and you're voting to purchase it from this vendor as a single-source item.
Well, nobody in that area, we found them.
That's not what the statute says, I'm just letting you know what, that the statute's very specific in that way. So if this is going to be considered a single-source item, because it, it doesn't, it doesn't, the statute does not refer to location. It refers to the actual item itself, right? So if you are going to state or certify that there is no vendor that has this particular vehicle equipped with the way the county needs it, then I agree with Evelyn, then it would be considered a, a single-source item available to purchase. And that would be up to the court to decide, because I, I can't verify one way or the other because I don't know what to look for.
Kristen and I got on her computer and we looked on the buy board and there is not a vendor on the buy board that handles a chipper truck. We looked and looked, Commissioner King has looked, Commissioner Martin has got on his computer and looked, so it's not just me. There's multiple of us have been looking for months to find these trucks and they're just not available.
And the standard, if I may, Commissioner, the standard is if there, if there is no reasonable alternative. So considering all the information that you gathered, reasonableness, I think, has been met in this situation. Having to go to California, North Carolina, and, or wherever to see maybe possibly that they wouldn't even be doing business, then I don't believe that having to explore that would be, I think that would be unreasonable. So I think you have met your reasonable standard considering the work that you've put into it in searching and attempting to, to find other alternatives or companies that are willing to bid and you just haven't been able to do that, so.
And this truck is not exactly what I was looking for, but it will do the job. It's a little bit smaller than what we were looking to replace, our truck we currently have is a little bit larger, a little bit heavier duty. But this truck will do the job considering I've looked all over the United States to find one.
And that's, I'm sorry, sir.
As well as Commissioner King and Martin and.
And that's what, that's why it needs to be on this agenda and it needs to be transparent that this, that, so that the public understands that the research was done looking for other opportunities or allowing this to be in an open bid and, and that's just not possible at this time. So that's why this needs to be brought to Commissioner's court for full. I believe that with all the work that, that Commissioners have done in trying to, to seek that out that.
Do you think that truck's still available or?
As of Thursday last week, it was, when I spoke with Lance. I just wanted to read the description of the truck just for transparency. It is a 2024 Chevy Chevrolet Silverado MD Work Truck with three miles, color white. Four-wheel drive, turbocharged Duramax, 6.6-liter V8 turbo diesel. Regular chassis, that's all it says. The total purchase price was 101,695,000. There is a $3,800 rebate. And with fees of $557.75 making the total amount 98,452.75.
Let me be clear, we were not looking for a four-wheel drive. But is what it is, it's the closest truck available, so.
So given, you know, given that, Commissioner, we don't have to put the cap price on there, I just did that, so it exceeded the amount.
If they've still got that truck, I mean, it will absolutely do the job.
Russell, have you seen?
We jump in a pickup and run to Houston and pick it up.
Oh, you found this truck?
It's not in Virginia, it's not in Phoenix, so.
Do you, I'll entertain a motion, do you want the motion to be specific to that purchase of that vehicle? Then we can drop the 110 cap because obviously it is lower than the 110?
Judge, just for clarification, you would have to make the motion to purchase from, if, if you're going to purchase from this because you're, you are stating that it is a single-source item.
All right.
I have no idea, this is all I received, I'm assuming that's what the fee's, 557.75, but I don't know. They would, I guess my other question would be is they would still have to follow the county's process in terms of the dealer filling out all of the registration paperwork like our typical dealers do. So Commissioner, whoever's going to be in charge of this, make sure that they are aware that they'll have to follow the procedures for tax title and licensing as well as coordinating, are we going to pay to pick it up or have it delivered or who's, that, that needs to be accounted for as well?
We'll drive, we'll drive down to Houston and get it, that's. And with being a dealer, they should do all of the proper paperwork to license, title, register. But we can confirm that because I didn't want to confirm all of that until we brought it to court.
Okay, and then Judge, secondly, would be on the agenda, it states on there that you, the court is considering utilizing ARPA funding, ARPA funds for this. So that's not something that was entered into the budget, in the, this year's budget. So what we can do is, because the money for ARPA has been allocated to the Expo Center project. So if you're going to utilize ARPA funds, then I would need someone to include that the money be transferred from the Expo Center project to the purchase of this truck.
All funds are to the Expo Center currently?
When we did, when we made the, when we did the budget, we allocated, I don't have the exact, to the penny, but we allocated some funds to the EOC Center and some, and the remaining 4 million plus to the Expo Center. I did research on Friday just to verify funding and how we would move things around. So I'm confident that if we wanted to use, use ARPA funds to purchase this truck, that would be acceptable and I would just need to move things around, but I would need the courts.
You need that motion first before we go to the approval of the.
Or you can just make it all in one motion. If, if you want to. It's one agenda item.
Okay. All right. Commissioner, you got a mouthful to go.
So we need to move this exact amount out of the ARPA funds?
I would.
I don't know.
I would move the 110.
I, I would say not to exceed.
Not to exceed 110. Not to exceed the 110 because we don't know if that's the TTNL.
Right. And I, I can confirm when I, I call Lance back to tell him that we're going to proceed and we'll have to get a W9 and all that kind of stuff.
I will make a motion that we move not to exceed $110,000 out of the ARPA funds to purchase a 2024 Chevrolet Silverado MD Work Truck with a chipper bed on it from NAP Chevrolet in Houston. And the purchase price we have at this time is 98,452.75. Transfer from the ARPA funds at the Expo Center to purchase this truck. Did I get it all in there?
I believe so.
Okay.
I knew who the second was coming from, there was nobody else sitting next to you. All right, motion been made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner King. Is there any other discussion regarding agenda item number three? Hearing none, I'm going to call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Those against, let the record reflect, judge voted in the affirmative. Motion passes.
Take a picture of that with his name and number on it right quick if you don't mind. I've got it here, but it's hard for me to see. Thank you.
Okay, we moved agenda item number four, discuss, take action on acceptance settlement from the Texas opioid litigation settlement. And Evelyn, I need to ask you, there's some confidential things that cannot be talked about regarding this settlement unless we go into executive session. But there's no need for that if we're just going to accept the funding that's from the settlement grant.
Yes, this, this is a class action suit that the county joined years ago, I think before anyone. I, I think they were different people. And so as part of the class action suit, it has been settled. I believe at the national level or wherever the suit was pending. And in order to proceed with the settlement, it needs to be approved by everyone in the class action. It will provide some, some funds to the county as, as a recipient of this class action. You have the right to not agree to it, but then we would be excluded from the class action and then we would have to sue ourselves individually. And that is not something that I would recommend and certainly would not be in the county's best interest, so. But, you know, it's up to the county whether to, to proceed with just, as one member of this class action to approve this settlement.
Our Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion on agenda item number four.
I make a motion to accept the settlement from the Texas opioid litigation settlement.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Perdola. Are there any other discussion on agenda item number four? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those against, let the record reflect, judge voted in the affirmative, the motion passes. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Perdola. All those in favor say aye. All those against, we adjourn. The time is 10:27 a.m.